Okay, counsel, it is seven o'clock. Will everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Okay. Up next, we have roll call.
Mayor, I think I'm gonna do a voice call because of the Zoom attendees, if that's okay.
Okay, please, yes.
Okay. Mayor Coleman?
Here.
Counselor Grego?
Here.
Counselor Broyles?
Here.
Counselor Hensley? She's here, but she's away from her death. Counselor Carson? And Counselor Carson?
Here.
All counselors present, or, and Counselor Daniel previously requested to be excused, and Counselor Vehill will be coming in late.
Yes, he mentioned to us that he has a parent-teacher conferences to do at school, and he will be arriving here shortly. Thank you. Okay, all right. Up next, on the agenda, we have the agenda approval. Counselor Grego?
Make a motion, approve the agenda as presented, and excuse, I believe, just Council Daniels, because Vehill's gonna join us.
Yes.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Martinez, you want to do a verbal voice vote? Okay, go ahead.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Up next, we have up next, we have citizen comments. This is the portion of the agenda where we allow citizens to come up to the podium, or either make comments on Zoom. We do ask that you keep your comments to within three minutes. If you are still talking at the three-minute mark, I will politely ask you to end at that particular time. So we're gonna start off with the audience here. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to come up to the podium and make any comments, please feel free to do so at this time. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience who wants to come up, so we'll go ahead and open it up to the people on Zoom. Ms. Martinez, will you give them instructions on how to raise their hand to be noticed?
Yes, sir, if you're on the Zoom app, use the raise your hand button in the bottom of your screen to speak, and if you're on a telephone, it'll be star nine. Mayor, I don't see anybody raising their hand.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised either, so we'll go ahead and close this segment of the agenda and close the citizen comment, and move to the next item on the agenda. And the next item is consent calendar A, Counselor Grego?
If there's no questions, I'll make a motion that we approve consent calendar A's presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? I don't see any. Ms. Martinez, if you don't mind, if you'd like to take that vote.
Yes, sir. Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, thank you, counsel. Up next, we have business brought forward by our city staff, finance, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty-one, and ordinance making the annual appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, mayor. This is the second reading, and I'm not gonna spend tons of time covering the items we've covered. We've had several work sessions, a public meeting, and the last meeting. I will indicate some of the high level. We are projecting sales tax revenue to increase at three percent. The budget does include the implementation of the pay plan. We also include about four hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that is a pass-through for the CDBG early childhood project. We are looking spread throughout the budget as appropriate, the use of the ARPA funds for those qualified projects that have been identified by city council, one of which is to use about a hundred thousand for the implementation of the downtown, another fifty thousand for the implementation of the housing plan, and another hundred thousand to create a co-responder program in our police department. From a personnel perspective, we do have the addition of an IT technician that's based on our IGA with the city of Montavista, and we do have some restructuring in our parks department to take a part-time, make it full-time, and then two seasonals to make it full-time, to meet the demand and the growth that we are seeing in our outdoor recreation. From an enterprise perspective, the rates will be increased based on the twenty eighteen ordinance that council passed, which is five percent for water, eight percent for sewer, and six percent for sanitation. And again, we will have use of ARPA funds for some of those qualified projects. The street trust fund, thankfully, given the performance of our sales tax, and we've been able to keep our costs at a competitive rate, we will be able to move up the second phase of State Avenue to next year and be able to do both of those phases in one year, and then hopefully that will have a domino effect of moving the other street projects forward. The community recreation fund, we have several capital improvement, and now that we've got a little bit more time under our belt with the operations of the golf course, we're better able to calibrate those expenses and revenues. I do want to point out that there are a few minor changes, five to be exact, that we are recommending being added from your first reading to this reading right now, and so let me review those. Based on the discussions we've been having on our need to do enhanced public engagement and outreach, I'm recommending that we add a line item to my budget for public information of five thousand. So it's a very small number, but that will allow us to purchase what we need for the farmer's market and to do that outreach and engagement that we talked about. The police department has been successful in receiving a grant for twenty-six thousand for their SWAT. We'd rather get it in the budget and not have to do it as a budget amendment. Based on council's vote at your last meeting and authorization for the ready grant, we've added another fifty thousand from ARPA for the downtown plan implementation for an almost seven hundred thousand dollar project cost. We added forty thousand to the enterprise fund for the rental of the crusher equipment, and we needed to move some of the CIP around for the parks, because the HVAC system is about to fail, so we had some savings, but we needed to put the HVAC system in there. We weren't successful in getting a grant this year, and so that's why it was accidentally left off. And the golf course bunker needed to be put in there. We had moved it to unfunded. We can't do that. So therefore, we modified a few of the other projects to unfunded, so it is budget neutral. But I did want to point out that a few of those things within the CIP for the parks, CIP changed slightly because of some urgency. And with that, if you want to ask questions, or if you want to open up the public hearing.
I'm gonna open up for a public hearing now. We'll go ahead and open it up for a public hearing. For anyone in the audience right now who would like to make any comments in regards to this ordinance, we ask that you come up to the podium, because we are opening up the public hearing and second reading for ordinance number nineteen twenty twenty-one. Feel free to come up to the podium, voice your concerns. Don't see anyone in the audience who would like to walk up to the podium, so we'll go ahead and go to Zoom. If you could share with the people on Zoom how to raise their hands and participate.
Okay, if you want to speak on this ordinance right now, use the raise your hand button in the bottom of your screen, or if you're on the telephone, dial star nine. Mayor, I'm not seeing anyone raising their hand.
I don't see any hands raised either, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for comments and our motion. Counselor Grego?
Thank you, mayor. Before I make a motion, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I want to thank the city manager and the finance director and all the staff. This is a pretty big budget, and to put it together and make it stay under budget, it's a big monumental task. So I'd like to thank each and every one that's participated on this.
Can I make a comment as well, mayor?
Sure, go ahead, Counselor Carson.
You know, in regards to what Counselor Grego said, I would also like to thank staff. Yesterday, I had a media person actually approach me and give me quite a few compliments and compliment city staff on how lean our budget is. He said, "I can't understand how you guys are running the city, and all you do on a budget as lean as you are." He goes, "I've gone through," and he said he had tried to find, you know, some some places where we could trim that, and he said he was amazed. So I just wanted to give staff kudos and give council kudos for paying attention to that, because we're running a really clean budget. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. Appreciate that. Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No. Okay, Ms. Martinez?
Okay. Counselor Grego? Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have a public hearing and resolution for number seven dash twenty twenty-one, proposed budget amendment number two, making supplemental appropriations and authorizing expenditures in excess of amounts budgeted for the city of Alamosa in ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you, mayor, and I hope you guys are nice to me tonight, because our finance director had a family emergency, so I am pinch hitting a little bit on this information. Overall, if you scroll through, you will see that a lot of the budget amendment is related to grants that we have been successful in receiving. Additionally, the ARPA funds for those projects that council has identified, and we were able to use this year, as well as any of the grant, the CARES funding. We had some prepayments for the special improvement districts, and so that's a lot of what the revenue coming in, warranting some of the budget changes. I'm gonna just kind of go a little bit line item by line item. So for expenses out of the general fund, we do have an increase of about seventeen thousand for outside legal services. For the municipal court, we have a little bit of moving around of some salaries for municipal court and clerk related to the part-time. We also have in the city manager's office a slight budget, an eight hundred and thirty dollar budget increase for the intern that we used for ARPA grant, finding grants. In clerk, we, as a way to support businesses, when we placed the parklet, they did have to file to modify their liquor license, and so we reimburse them for that cost to make sure and provide support for them. In non-departmental, we have the funding that was received for the huts out at St. Benedict and those expenses. We did go over on the small business relief grant, but we are able to use CARES to cover that overage for business support. We did spend more on the marketing, oh, the marketing IGA that council approved, where it's ten thousand per year for that development destination position. For this first year, it wasn't a full year, so it was prorated at four thousand. We, since we didn't have the employee barbecue last year, we transferred that savings from last year over to this year, so we could have a little bit better of an employee barbecue. And obviously, any prepayments we get for special improvement district, we pay those loans off, and so it flows through as an expense. The camera system at the PD interview room failed, and we used the IT savings to replace that. The Gmail accounts costs have gone up, as well as the number of users, so we have a budget increase related to that. As council approved, the ARPA use of, ARPA funding use for the council AV system, the IT van and equipment, the library servers, the new equipment for the development services director, the Zoom annual fees, the council management software, financial budget software, the ADA compliant website, and a computer for that co-responder position. So all of those are ARPA-funded projects. Economic development, council directed us to forgive the balance for those business loans. That eight thousand five hundred was the remaining amount that we weren't sure we would be able to, but thanks to ARPA, we will be able to. From the police, it's the expenses for training that the training foundation is covering. Council during their mini-retreat authorized us to go over budget by twenty thousand for additional surveillance equipment that is being utilized on these drug offer operations. We also had an accident where Canejos County was at fault and needed to reimburse us, and so those expenses for four thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine, as well as the storage container, so we could clear out an office for that co-responder position. Under fire, we did have the motor go out on the rescue truck that needed to be replaced at sixteen thousand. Twenty-one thousand is related to the, when we were doing the non-congregate housing with La Puente and the county during COVID, as well as that forty-one thousand for the salary for the person. Under support services, we had the seven thousand dollar price tag for the cleanup of the Devil's Playground area, when we had a large amount of encampments out there, as well as co-responder furniture. Under development services, those are finally getting a better handle of what salaries need to come out of public works and be in the new Department of Development Services, and how much of Harry, we'll get to that here in a bit, needs to go to enterprise. And so there's just some final calibration of those. And so under PD for admin, that's also shifting around some of those expenses with that split within the department. Under streets, we did we are increasing the budget by about twenty-five thousand related to the CDOT grant that we received for Main Street, and the purchase of a stump and root grinder. I'm just going through this. We got purchase of COVID supplies paid for with ARPA funding. Under enterprise, again, it's moving some of Harry's, because more of his time will be taken up from an enterprise perspective. We have the pass-through of the Water Tower Telecommunications, and then, as you might remember, the wastewater treatment plant well failed. I think it's a water treatment plant failed. Sorry, there's two W's. I think it's just one. And so we are using ARPA funding to fix that. And then the emergency repair of the screw pump that did fail at the wastewater treatment plant, and that's also using ARPA funding. Those have all been previously approved by city council. Under capital expenditures, it's taking the release, the general fund, the release of the IT van, since we're using ARPA funding, we can put that back into the general fund. The employee benefit fund is the wellness incentives that we did for employees if they received their shots. ARPA funding is paying for a majority of that back into the employee wellness fund. And then we are moving the Montana Azul budget from the Parks and Rec budget to the Conservation Trust Fund budget. That trust fund budget, fund was growing a little too much, and we just kept putting everything into the rec fund. But when we look at it, it all kind of comes together, but per auditing reasons, it has to be separated differently. And then under the community rec funds, there's a lot of the purchases for the library related to COVID and ARPA funding, and then underneath recreation, successful grants, dredging of the Blanca Vista Pond, again, that's grants, sponsorships, the boat ramp, moving that over from twenty twenty. The warming hut did not happen, so that's why it's a positive. And moving the Montana Azul to the Conservation Trust Fund. And then under golf course, we had sales that were higher than anticipated, as well as cost of goods that were higher because of that. And that is a line-by-line snapshot of what this budget amendment is. I know we do not normally hold a public hearing with resolutions, but per DOLA regulations, we do need to have a public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brooks, for going over that. We'll now open up the public hearing for resolution number seven dash twenty twenty-one, proposed budget amendment number two, making supplemental appropriations and authorizing expenditures in excess of amounts budgeted for the city of Alamosa in ordinance number twenty-four twenty twenty. We have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments, please feel free to come up to the podium. Don't see anyone in the audience who wants to come up to the podium, so I'll go ahead and ask Ms. Martinez to give people on Zoom instructions, again, of how to raise their hands so they can be recognized.
Okay, if you want to speak on this resolution, use the raise your hand button in the bottom of your screen, if you're on the Zoom app, and if you're on a telephone, it'll be star nine.
Don't see any hands raised on Zoom, so do you, Ms. Martinez?
I do not.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close this public hearing and bring it back to council. Counselor Grego?
I had a question before I make a motion here. Are we dealing with a resolution number seven and ordinance number twenty-four? Or are we just, are we just making a motion on resolution number seven?
It's resolution number seven, which is technically amending the budget, which was passed by ordinance number twenty-four. So it's just before you tonight, it's just the resolution number seven.
Okay. If that's the case, then I'll make a motion. We pass resolution number seven twenty twenty-one.
I have a question. On the revenues, goes, on the general fund, it goes from eleven million to eleven eight, and so there's seven hundred and, I guess, seven hundred and three thousand in additional revenue, and that's coming from grants mostly?
Yes, that's tied specifically to expenses further down.
But the revenues coming from, you say, these grants, right?
It's grants. I technically don't call CARES funding or ARPA grants, because we, like, it wasn't a competitive process. It was a formula that was used to award it. But it's ARPA, it's CARES, and it's grants.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? No, if not, Ms. Martinez, please take the vote. I roll.
Okay. Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, the first reading of ordinance number twenty-two twenty-one, twenty, I'm sorry, ordinance number twenty-two twenty twenty-one, and ordinance authorizing the city manager to sign the Colorado opioid settlement memorandum of understanding.
Thank you, mayor. We held a work session last week to review this information. I'll just give a little bit of a brief background. As you know, the city of Alamosa filed a complaint against various opioid manufacturers and distributors in federal court in twenty eighteen. That was since consolidated into a nationwide multi-district litigation that is being heard in the northern district of Ohio. The Colorado Attorney General's Office has also participated in that MDL. As those lawsuits have worked their way through that process, from a negotiation for settlements and appeals, the MDL is being proposed to be settled on a nationwide basis, with numerous defendants contributing to a settlement fund, proposed to be distributed to the states, and then further distributed to the local jurisdictions within those states. The amount of that settlement fund distributed to each state will be affected by how many local jurisdictions within that state sign on, and especially any local jurisdictions that were participating in the MDL or other opioid litigation. The Attorney General's Office has created the Colorado Opioids Settlement Memorandum of Understanding, which is attached to this item, and that would guide the dispersment and use of any of those funds within the state of Colorado. The funds would be split with ten percent going towards infrastructure determined by the state, ten percent to the state of Colorado, twenty percent to local governments, and sixty percent to regional governing committees. There's more in-depth information that was attached to the agenda item on that. As we discussed in the work session, it is staff's recommendation to participate in this MOU with the Colorado Attorney General in order to administer the settlement funds. We could choose to litigate on our own, but that is not what our staff recommendation is. So I'm just reading through this. Our position is consistent with that of our opioid attorneys and the attorney general. There are significant benefits to entering into the settlement rather than litigating on our own. One is control of eighty percent of the funds locally, twenty percent that comes to us, and sixty percent that comes to the valley. And then the ability of the region to make decisions locally on how to best address that, those fundings and the opioid epidemic. And by doing it this way, we do believe it will be available much quicker and available over the next eighteen years versus being drawn out with uncertain litigations, appeals, and attempts at collection. So the item that is before council tonight is if you want to authorize the city manager to sign various agreements with the Attorney General's Office to enter into that overarching agreement. From a financial impact perspective, we anticipate that about, for our twenty percent, the city would receive a total of fifty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy-eight, which accounts to about three thousand three hundred and fifteen per year over eighteen years, and that the valley would receive two point six million, which is about a hundred and forty-six thousand per year for eighteen years. And with that, I'm, you might want to, or we don't do a public hearing on first reading. I'm available for any questions, as is the city attorney. He's sitting up, so I wasn't sure if he was getting ready to say something.
I did want to add one important point. This is a series of documents that you would be authorizing the city manager to sign, and one of those documents is an escrow agreement that will hold our participation in the settlement conditioned upon the state actually being successful in getting ninety-five percent of its local governments over ten thousand or who are litigating to sign on, because the settlement, the nationwide settlement is structured in a way that the, there are incentives that start breaking down greater amounts to states when they get a greater percentage of their local governments signing on, obviously, because the manufacturers and distributors want this done. They don't want other non-signing governmental entities suing them. So the state proposes this escrow agreement such that our participation in the MOU doesn't kick in until they reach that ninety-five percent threshold and have achieved maximum funding out of those settlement funds.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Also, Brawls?
I was gonna say, this is a good resolution, because we're receiving money, so it's always good. But I would make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash two zero two one.
And then set that for a public hearing? On November third?
Yeah, set that for a public hearing on November third.
Thank you.
I also appreciate all the information you gave us at the work session. Really covered this whole deal. I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Not, Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Grego? Counsel, or Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, the first reading of ordinance number twenty 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 one. And ordinance amending section one eighteen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa making charges that are. Otherwise non-jailable offenses jailable upon the fourth offense within two years upon written or oral motion of the prosecutor. That's going to be our city attorney.
It is, thank you, Mayor. You will recall, we discussed this in a work session with council and the shorthand for this was saying we were reversing the presumption. On jailable ability and initially as part of that work session, session discussion, staff. Let me back up. Right now, as you know, most offenses in the city code of ordinances are not jailable. There are ten or twelve that are considered serious enough that council said, yes, those can be jailable on first offense, but for the balance of. Code violations, they are only jailable if there have been four offenses within a span of two years. Once there have been four offenses within a span of two years, those become jailable. Unless the city prosecutor files a written motion with the court. Asking them that they not be treated as jailable. And as I indicated in the work session. In my experience as prosecutor since this ordinance went in in twenty eighteen. And my experience beginning in twenty nineteen, of course. The number of defendants before the court. Who that would apply to, who, who, in other words, will have accumulated sufficient offenses of a, of the same category within two years to become jailable. Frequently, that happens in situations where jail just doesn't make sense. And so we had talked about reversing the presumption and saying, well, if you get four, then they are. Not jailable unless the prosecutor files a motion to make it jailable and we discussed concerns about the kind of. Orientation and direction really that that setup would give to both staff and citizens and just the general vision of council. It was Counselor Hensley proposed doing it slightly differently, which would be that after four. Then the charge becomes jailable upon either a written or an oral motion of the prosecutor. And that, I'm sorry, becomes, let me back up, becomes non-jailable. Upon written or oral motion of the prosecutor. So that's, that's the way that this is written. The proposed ordinance states. That if the offense is for a fourth or more violation within two years. The offense should be treated as a jailable offense unless the prosecutor upon written motion or oral motion. Made to the court in the presence of the defendant elects to treat the offense as a non-jailable offense. So it is jailable, but. At the hearing with the defendant there, usually it's their initial appearance. I could say, Judge, I don't want this one treated as jailable. The other option, which is in the materials, would be to go back to saying, well, it's not jailable unless the prosecutor files a motion to make it jailable. I sensed and I checked with the city manager on this, her sense was also. The council in general out of coming out of the work session preferred the first way, which is the way the ordinance is written, but. You do have the language for the alternate way as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sweets out. So we'll go ahead and open it up to council for comments. Counsel Brawls?
So I guess I don't quite understand, is this a burdensome, is it burdensome right now to the way it's written?
The way it's written right now is burdensome because it requires a written motion to treat something as non-jailable that I would say. At least half of the cases that fall into the category for jailable because of the frequency. With which they have recurred are ones that I don't believe are appropriate to be treated as jailable. And I would have to file a written motion not to do that. If they are treated as jailable, certain things follow from that as well. We do need to appoint a public defender or a city defender to represent the defendant on a jailable offense. And so that, it, it bogs that process down. For me, it's much more efficient. And given the, the way that I have seen those charges play out. Certainly more efficient to be able to ask the court just orally in open court to treat something as jailable that does qualify because of that. For, for term frequency.
Thank you, Counsel Grego.
Again, the work session that we had on this provided a lot of really good information, so. I don't know if the rest of the counselors have any questions or comments before I make a motion.
I just have one comment because it seems like you addressed that. For me, my big issue was is that I didn't want people in the public just thinking that they can just get away with offenses. If they do four within two years and they're not going to be held accountable by just automatically making it non-jailable. I think the way you have it written in the first option to where you have a, a right to use your discretion, I just ask that you. Use your discretion appropriately so that people don't think that they have a free rein to continue to commit crimes. That's going to affect our businesses, our people in general.
Yep, and that's why I think that this, this way of doing it, which again goes back to Counselor Hensley's suggestion. Leaves in place councils' direction really embodied in the ordinance that, hey, if you rack up four, we're going to consider that jailable. As a default position.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's no other comments, then I'll make a motion on first reading. That we pass ordinance number twenty twenty one and set it for a public hearing on November third at seven o'clock or sooner after.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? If not, Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, first reading of ordinance number twenty one twenty twenty one. And ordinance repealing section one dash eighteen E four. And amending section thirteen dash fifty seven B of the Colorado Code of Ordinances. Of the City of Alamosa concerning the right to trial by jury to make the code provisions. Comport with state law.
Thank you, Mayor, that's me again. This issue, as you will recall, came up when you, when council was considering ordinance number eighteen dash twenty twenty one. Because one of the things that ordinance number eighteen twenty twenty one would have done. Was to fix this inconsistency that we currently have in our code about the right to a jury trial. With what state law requires. In other words, right now, our code. Says you don't have the right to a jury trial unless the offense for which you are charged is a jailable offense. And under state law, that's just not true. There are other circumstances in which you do have the right to a jury trial. And so that needs to be fixed. That's what this ordinance does is it repeals. The inconsistent position that was in one eighteen E four and it rewrites. Thirteen dash fifty seven B to be consistent with state law. As, as it was, we didn't need the section in, in, or the provision in section one dash eighteen. Because it was essentially just repeated in thirteen dash fifty seven. So that's not only wrong, but. It, it extraneous, it's redundant, we don't need it. And this puts the. Ordinances or the codes discussion of when you have a right to a jury trial in one place and makes it consistent with state law.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sweets. Okay, council? Counsel Grego?
No comments then, I'll make the motion on first reading. That we pass ordinance number twenty dash twenty twenty one and set it for a public hearing on November third at seven o'clock or soon thereafter.
So I guess you have a slight question. So we had the public hearing last time. And the attorneys were objecting. How does that fit into this?
So there was two parts to that ordinance. They were objecting to the second part, which was gonna bring jail back onto the table. We're not touching any of that. The first part, which is still needed, which is to align it with the state law. That's what this is. It's non-controversial.
All right, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Mart, go ahead, Counsel Carson?
No, I, I don't have any discretion, I'm sorry.
Okay, no worries. Would you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Grego? Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us to committee reports. Do we have anyone with any committee reports? I have a committee report. If we don't have anyone, I attend the Parks and Rec Board meeting this past week and they have a lot of good positive things going on. With Parks and Rec, we talked about the different projects and grants for the Montana Azul Park Grand Opening and the Riparian Park and Refuge Trail Master Plan. We also had several program special event updates. A couple of good notes that I took here, golf revenues are up twenty percent and that's very good to, to know. We've had some good high school participation with Andy in the high school. Outdoor adventure with Artega Middle School is, is I believe going to be taking place. Youth climbing activities are planned to start, I believe, the thirtieth, the first class, the thirtieth of October. Fall hiking season will, will begin with ASU. Opening night for the multipurpose ice skating rink is on Halloween, I believe, the thirty first of October. And the Alamosa High School softball use with the rec park worked out very well this year. And we had our, had a professional sanctioned, sanctioned disc golf tournament. In our city, which was great, had a lot of people show up and turn out, so. There is a lot of wonderful things going on with our Parks and Rec. And we would like to thank the entire staff for the work that they are doing, so thank you. And that's my staff update. I'm sorry, that's Heather's staff update coming up. That's my committee report.
Well, let me, I make a comment, I wasn't able to make the rec, so. I appreciate the notes that you took, Mayor. Maybe from now on, you should take the rest of the notes.
You know, I missed you, man. I missed you. Charlie, Counsel Grego is the one who usually do the thorough job of keeping notes, so we'll be glad to see you at the next meeting. Thank you. All right, thank you, buddy. All right, so no other committee reports. We'll move on down to staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor Holly. Did you want to do a quick one? So I just have a quick update. So the swearing in of council, so when council takes the new seats, it will be on your, on the December first. Council meeting, it would have been earlier, but the canvas is not going to be done until like November twenty third or twenty fourth. And I can't certify the election until after that happens, so it'll be then, so. Current council will start the meeting and then when, after the swearing in, the new council will take their seats.
December the first?
December first.
Okay, thank you.
I also just wanted to, as Harry makes his way up, you're not off the hook. As Harry makes his way up, do a reminder that we do have our joint dinner with the county commissioners next week on Thursday, the twenty eighth at five thirty. And then we also have the ribbon cutting at Montana Azul Park on next Friday, the twenty ninth at two o'clock. And given the extreme amount of work that our city staff and CDOT have done over the last week. I just wanted to see if you had any questions related to Main Street. I know we were trying this fogging as an attempt. I, I think some people in the public don't understand that we're not idiots, to be frank. We've been working with CDOT that does these types of projects throughout the state on a fairly regular basis. And there really is not a simple fix to get rid of the old lines because of how they're down and the reflectivity and all of that. And so it really has been with CDOT and the city trying to think outside the box on how to do some of this treatment. I'll let Harry talk a little bit more about that. But I just wanted to be the one that was a little bit more blunt to say that we're not idiots and. That this really is actually a problem that happens in other places when they change the lines type of thing. And Harry, I didn't know if you wanted to talk a little bit more.
No, I, I think we've really tried to exhaust, you know, any of our other options that were, you know, not extremely expensive. Anything that would not really disrupt, you know, normal business anymore than we already have. I think in the future, if we want to continue to do, do anything else, or if it doesn't fade over time, we're really looking at some type of overlay. Whether it's an overlay, a slurry seal, there's a sand seal, there's, there's different treatments that we can do just to kind of. Completely overlay the street. So with that, it's, you know, it's quite expensive, so I think, you know, the public and council bear with us. Let's see what happens over the next few months. How, you know, CDOT is going to be putting down mag chloride, they're going to be sanding the road, I think it will kind of wash in a little bit better. And then we'll reassess it come springtime.
And I did get a question on if we're going to go put the tabs back out there. Since we are this close to when we might be having snow events and the snowplows will be popping them right off. We, we're not going to put the tabs out until after winter time. And so we would, after winter time, depending on how all this wearing in of the lines go. We can reevaluate putting tabs back out because they are thoroughly inexpensive, but. Putting them out before we may have snow weather is, they're just going to pop right off, so it's, it's a waste of time type of thing.
Mayor, I, I just had a couple of comments. I did get a lot of comments from people that the city is trying to make an effort to. And bottom line, it's a safety thing and, and that's what we're looking at and so. We still have those people that no matter if you take it four feet, ten feet, they're still not going to be satisfied, so. But I really appreciate the fact that there's, you know, when they come to council, sometimes they say, well, council, I'm not going to do nothing about it. Well, here's to, to show the people that, you know, when they come here, we do react to the comments that they make out there. So thank you so much for all the efforts and you guys have bent over backwards and. And like I said, it, safety comes first and I think, you know, the, the way you did it, it should work out. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Brawls?
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing with Counselor Grego said. I think it's, you made a good improvement down there. It's clear to me anyway, and I tried, so I think, appreciate your responsibility to getting that done, so. Thank you. I think, I think it's good, so it can't be perfect, but it'll take time. I think as time goes on, it'll work out right. See it more clear as time goes on.
Thank you, Counsel Brawls. Counsel Carson?
I, I just wanted to tell Harry and Heather and the rest of the staff, thank you as well for the, for the quick, quick turnaround on that. That was pretty quick. I do like, I do like the way it stayed. I think that from a safety perspective, that made a big difference. I am a little disappointed that people still complain and you, you know, and still find a way to. To change even some of the stuff they said right before, even if we did address it. But I do want to say thank you. I do, you know, I, I do agree, it's going to take a little bit of time to, to get that. That washed out a little bit, that the other lines, but I think it looks great. And thank you, guys. We're not going to make everybody happy, but it, it's a good effort, good moving forward and. Again, driving through different towns and looking at their streets and the way ours is configured, even right now, we have much more room for people to get out of their cars and. I'd say ninety percent of the streets I've seen, probably even more. So kudos and thank you to staff for all that. Very good work.
Thank you, Counsel Carson. Okay. I don't, I don't see Counsel Hensley trying to say anything, so I'll just wrap things up. Thank you also very much. It does look a, a lot better. And I'm glad that you continue to mention that we are working in collaboration with CDOT. And that we do have intelligent people working on our staff as well to work with CDOT. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And that's it from a staff update, Mayor. Thank you.
Good deal. So that brings us on down to council comments. Do we have any council comments? Counselor Carson? Counselor Carson?
I think he forgot to lower his hand and I forgot that Eric.
I'm sorry about that.
Eric whispered he needed to say something.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to have the record reflect that council has been so efficient this evening that Counselor V Hill. Didn't make it in before the meeting looks to be adjourned, just so that, that, that it was unclear, it would have been unclear in the record, now it's clear.
Thank you for clarifying that. We really appreciate that. Okay, any other? Council comments? I just have a few. Once again, thank the staff for the, everyone who participated on the budget, you did a wonderful job and it takes a team effort to make that come out well. The Main Street, appreciate all the efforts from everyone. and it takes a team effort to make that come out well. Uh, the Main Street, appreciate all the efforts from everyone. Uh, Parks and Rec Department. Um, the other thing I wanted to just uh highlight is Chief Anderson uh is in here today, and I just would like to have everyone give him a round of applause for the wonderful article that came out in the paper today, telling about how good the P D is doing, and I know he wouldn't want anyone to applaud him, that's why we're going to do it. Okay, let's give him a round of applause. Thank you, Chief, and thank your team, and thank you for letting the community uh hear your perspective from your officers, the staff, and also council uh as well. That's all I have. Any other comments? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.